Okay, I call a meeting to order. Chairman of the legislative agents. The legislative agents to fly the United States of America into the Republicans' richest stance on my nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Right. Welcome our board members tonight Valerie Bratman is ten point in tomorrow's board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good good. Give me the camera.
Do I hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. I wish I could.
Second that.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? As the opposed? Motion carry. Um. Road report.
What about the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, a doc. Approval of the minutes of nine eleven twenty-three, I'm sorry. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry. Until the road report.
Okay, I'm gonna apologize now, I do have a few things tonight, so uh there was permit it as painless as possible. Winter stand, we did approximately two two thousand two hundred yards into our stand shed, we tied that up last Thursday, so that is all done, we're ready for. You know, whatever we gotta do there. Um, it was actually really quick using another company to help us haul when they're able to hold twenty-eight thirty yards depending on which truck they use. Um, so that that was outstanding to be able to do that and free us up to be able to continue working on the roads and the other time. Uh, that's all done, we've been plugging away at our MRGP work when it's not raining out. Um. Tomorrow we will be hauling the asphalt grindings, they're gonna be cold playing Main Street between College and Stewart's. So however long that takes us tomorrow, we'll be we'll be doing that. Um. And then we'll be back to our MRGP work doing some culverts and whatnot on Watkins, Pine Hill and Dayton Hill Road. Um, I'm still waiting on an ETA for the Watkins Hill culvert, squash tube culvert, uh, we cannot plan the work to be done by Phil Scott until we know when the culvert's gonna begin. Um, but. But that's that that should go pretty smooth once it happens, so. Um.
Is it still closed, is the road still closed?
No, we've. Yeah, so we've we've only been closing Watkins while we're working on it, it's open to emergency services at any point, uh, but we're doing it so. For, you know, safety reasons and because there's no houses in the area that we're working. The the two people that are there this time of year know that they're welcome to to go by the sign and in and out as needed. Um, but otherwise we're just keeping that kinda closed off and. Um. You know, other than we move the road close sign out when we're done working there for the day.
Um, when it gets done, we have to put, we'll have to be something up there for bikers for the loose gravel.
So we're gonna try to put something a little bit smoother over the stone that's down right now. Uh, I'm permitted, I'm not sure how that's all gonna pan out. But we have been, we've been uh rolling it in with the roller on the grader to the point where it's pretty flat. Uh, you know, I wouldn't take a an asphalt tire bicycle over it, but I think if you do mountain bike trails and stuff, you.
Be okay?
Yeah, I I can't see why not, I would do it, I've done rougher than that, so. Um. So yeah, I think that that it should be fine for all pedestrian, bicycle, whatever traffic at that point. If not, they can detour around Pine Hill Ranch Road and come out on the same, yes, I have. It's a good workout.
Detour the bike.
It's a good workout, if you're going around there, you're looking for a workout anyway, so. Uh. Uh, that kinda backtrack to the Fennel Hollow has an incident there, I found out that on October ninth, um, absolute spill response and did mitigation for that whole. Incident is gonna be hauling out the contaminated soils uh without any required help from us or. Or any town or village genocide, so that should be taken care of and wrapped up at that point in time. We had truck one, which is a two thousand six international tandem. Sent to Earl's to to get some wiring and get some things buttoned up for it for winter time. And within a couple hours, I received a less than desirable phone call that the truck needs an extensive amount of work. Uh, beyond what we what we knew. Um, and we're looking at, to to do it all, we're looking at over twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um. To make the truck possibly suitable, but still not pass inspection, we're looking at five to seven thousand dollars. And there's also still no guarantee that the truck will actually make it through winter. From from Earl's if we do that.
The one ton?
No, this is a two thousand six ten wheeler.
Two thousand six.
Yeah. So I uh soon as I found that out, I informed Paul. We're looking into a diesel emission grant, the possibility or likeliness of that. And um, I called ATG, who we've gotten our last two trucks from in Westminster. They have one Freightliner ten wheeler that a town backed out of that will be. Up for sale, I am supposed to get a quote on that. It hasn't come through yet for whatever reason, so I can't tell you the price on that truck. Um, and I also don't know that what the delivery date or when we could have that by, cause it still has to go to Viking. And I I would assume that they would have it for at least two two more months, just just a guess, two, two to three more months maybe. To do the outfitting, cause it has no dump box on it right now or anything.
What's that, the new truck?
This would be, yeah, this would be a possible replacement if we were to go the route of replacing the ten wheeler with a new ten wheeler. I started looking into some options. Um, we we really can't be down a main plow truck. Um, now just hear me out and you'll kinda get a catch and drift of where I'm going on this. Um, I don't know how long diesel emission grant, if we were to get that, how long it would take for that to go through. Maybe Paul knows start finish from past experience.
A few months at least.
Yeah. Um. And then Alan and I went out to. Hopkinton, New Hampshire to HP Fairfield, who's a truck dealer, and they all saw fit, just like Viking Nelson does, and we looked at some some brand new trucks that can be ready to go within forty-five days. One of which is a very, very similar equivalent of the truck that we decided to purchase last winter, that Freightliner M two one oh six that we're still waiting on. Um, since I just said that, I'll I'll go through with that one. I also just found out today that we cannot expect to see that truck until at least March of next year. Yeah. Uh, with that, their, the four-wheel drive axle, they cannot find one anywhere in the country to slap onto that truck. So the only alternative to get the truck any faster would be to sacrifice four-wheel drive and get two-wheel drive. No, I'm not. I in no desire to do such a thing. Um, so with that being said, I asked them if we could back out of that deal. Uh, without any sort of a blowback or or repercussion, and we could, we could back out of that deal for that truck. Just as a quick reminder, that truck was a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Um. I have some quotes for this HP Fairfield's um equivalent of that truck. Which is a international CV. There's is basically the same specs, uh, the one that we had on order with ATG for a hundred ninety-one thousand. Is uh, it's a ten foot stainless steel box, this is a nine and a half stainless, nine and a half foot stainless steel box, so it's slightly shorter, it might hold maybe one yard less of material in it. But everything that we wanted when we ordered that truck is come, would come on on this international CV from HP Fairfield and this truck. Uh, the high D L R M L is one seventy-two on that, so it's actually considerably cheaper than the Freightliner that we had on order. Um. And then the even cheaper option than that is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, the thing that makes the big difference for that is the style of controls for the sander in that truck. Um. The obviously the more expensive one is a little bit better of a control option, and it has more options as far as putting down material. This, I have pictures, if you wanna see this truck, um. Has the built-in.
Do you see these trucks out when you saw this?
Yes.
Now, this truck, the new one we were gonna get, was pushed out to March, you canceled that order?
No, no, I asked, I didn't make any decisions on anything, I'm just finding out all of our.
You're finding out all of your approaches before that.
To solve this problem.
This this other one that you're talking, it's a hundred and seventy-two thousand, can be ready in forty?
Forty-five days.
Yeah, this place is kinda unique that they order cabin chassis into the shop and their outfitters as well, so it's a one. One-stop shop to get a complete.
You're you're welcome to pass around scroll through, there's pictures of of both of the the truck styles that we were looking at today.
Like a back row plow as well?
Yeah.
Yes, that's with the wing.
Front pile, wing.
Side wing plow.
Yeah, live hydraulics, uh, built-in front discharge, so we're putting traction in front of our tires. Um. And then the ten wheeler from them, if we were to buy a ten wheeler brand new from them, it would be the same deal, forty-five days. And their price is two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, so.
Two eighty-two?
Correct.
The smaller truck?
No, that's a bigger truck.
That's the big one, like the big red one.
That would be.
It's a ten wheeler.
Right, that would be the equivalent of of the truck that is having all the issues right now.
So we have the new one we just got, right, that we have, the new, the tandem.
New ten wheeler.
Right.
We don't have a new truck.
No.
Well, it's not that old.
Which one are we talking about?
From two, from two years ago, the one that Dickie got?
Yeah.
Correct.
Right, that's not very old, it's like a couple of years old.
Right, that's two years old.
Okay, so we need another.
Another truck, just like that one.
Like that one?
Ten wheeler for gravel roads.
For gravel roads.
My thought.
So, okay, so that would be two, now you're talking about one, another one broke down, so now we're looking at two more trucks to go with the new ta- two-year-old tandem? So I'm a little confused, right, so we we have three trucks?
No, so so we already had the one for a hundred ninety-one thousand on on order, right?
As that one you just saw.
The intention of that was to replace the Dodge, the two thousand twelve Dodge, uh, we wanted to upsize to a medium duty truck or whatever that.
So we wanted it by Christmas, cause we need.
We wanted it for this winter, right, and that's obviously out of the question at this point. Um.
So to get that one, we're gonna save a little bit of money, you feel like it's very similar to the one that you were gonna get for a hundred ninety-one? Even though it's a little bit smaller, but it'll be all right.
It's a half a foot smaller. And we're not doing a custom build from.
The box is only that much shorter.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So that one, we already have the money, basically we have it, so now we're just talking about.
Well, you've you've pledged ARPA funds for that meal.
Right, for that one, so now we're talking about one more truck, we haven't put money into one that just came.
That's the ten wheeler.
That's the ten wheeler.
Right.
That's truck one that needs all that work.
The O six, right?
Mm-hmm, the O six.
So how many miles are on the O six?
It's two eighty-two.
Two eighty-two.
I can't tell you off the top of my head, Mark. On a two thousand six.
Yeah.
Two eighty-two is not cheap, that's like.
It is not cheap, no.
How much was the other tandem?
And we wouldn't get it before winter anyway. Or did he say he could get that one in forty-five days?
That's forty-five days as well. They order like three hundred cabin chassis in, they're an outfitter, so as soon as they get the cabin chassis. And they get the go-ahead, they start putting it together the way you want it.
I don't think we're making enough bottle drives in by then.
From operational standpoint.
Well, Andy's got a lot of work at the transfer station.
From operational, what's more important, the ten wheel or the, you know, medium duty truck?
Right.
If you're winter.
Yeah, that's gonna have to, that's that's the decision we're gonna have to make. But we still have to come up with another hundred, hundred and ten thousand dollars just to cover the new ten wheeler. On top of that one seventy-two, if we don't get the one.
So. My thought is, at this point, I believe the the ten wheeler, if we had to choose between one of the two trucks, even though we already committed to the uh medium duty truck. If we have to choose between one of the two, we we need the ten wheeler more than that. We have that Ludlow truck that we purchased last year, the used twenty-fourteen truck. I would be confident saying that that could be the primary salt truck, but I would. I really don't wanna commit to saying that'll get us through through the winter on a gravel road where we're really gonna work that thing with crazy hills and and stuff like that, so. I I think if we had to choose, pick or choose one or the two, we need the ten wheeler.
Where did you come up with a hundred and ten thousand dollars?
So, sorry to drop a bomb, um, I wasn't any too thrilled to hear it as well, but you know, mind you, we just put. How much money into that truck last year, ten thousand dollars to have the head lane down and, you know, that that truck's at its age where.
It's a, it's a, it's a horse of putting too much money in.
Right.
We're starting to to lose them, and that's not part of that.
Right.
And we're gonna lose big time, but I don't know if we can come up with that kind of money, can we? Anybody's wheels turning?
Yeah, we, um. So we're, we're, when we bought that, the Baco, we've already spent this year's allocation.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep.
We do have money coming in for the diesel emissions, which helped us purchase that Baco. Um, that's a forty thousand dollar reimbursement that I'm expecting any day.
So now we're down to seventy thousand.
It would be from this emission grant, if we can get it from the truck we'd be replacing, it would be similar.
Yeah, that that, I mean, I I've been told that those, first of all, you're not guaranteed to grant, so you gotta apply for it. Um, that's supposed to come out, the the application, they're supposed to be available. I was told end of this month, beginning of next month, um, which is October. Um. So yeah, that's usually a, that would be probably a fifty fifty range. Um. So I mean, that's possibilities, there's.
What's the timeframe, if you said that they said that we wouldn't have to take the other truck that we've already planned on having? Is there a timeline that says, okay, after next week, you have to take it regardless and get it in March, I mean, do we? You just asked.
I think they messed up so bad on that, and he even admitted to me on the phone today. Um, that it was, that it was a mistake on his end, that there was a lot of error on his end or whatever with that, that I. I think right up until the final day, almost, we. I don't know, I don't, I really don't even wanna say that, cause I, you can't hold me to that.
We have a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars right now that we have allotted for that one-ton truck. Right?
Well, it's more than one ton, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a little more than one ton. It's, yeah, it's a little bit more than one ton. So that's actually, that's, that's ninety ninety-one thousand dollars we gotta come up with. Uh, if we were to get the ten-wheel truck. That'd be ninety-one thousand, you say we're getting how much from that?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand?
Eight thousand.
Looking at fifty-one thousand someplace, but not counting our chickens before they're hatched, we don't have that money in hand. So you really gotta.
It it'll be here probably in the in the next week or so.
Okay, so that chicken we can count as hatch.
I I feel confident you can count on that.
I'm like doing, spending money when we don't have, and it's just. You have, yeah, Jonathan, what?
I have a question and maybe a comment, um.
You're gonna give us a loan?
Uh-huh.
You're gonna give us a loan?
Yeah, it's a great, I I actually brought it with me. So I I heard a savings on between the two smaller trucks of about twenty thousand, and then I heard a repair bill for the truck that we currently have of about twenty and some change. Is there anything that can be done in that range to limp us through the year and get that one passing, but you mentioned that if we did the lesser of repairs, that Earl's couldn't guarantee it could get us to the winner, were they willing to guarantee if we spent the full amount on repairs?
You're still talking thirty thousand dollars with inspections and everything else, could be twenty thousand maybe to fix it, and that's just an estimate.
Understood, understood.
And you know that can go up, whatever.
And obviously we all.
And it's seven thousand, five to seven, just to get it inspected, if it'll pass inspection, and that's another.
Do we get any money for the truck that we, like, last time we had to film the truck, do we get money for this truck?
The diesel, diesel emission.
If if it applies for diesel emissions grant.
It's like a trade-in.
But we don't know if we would get it, that's a chicken you can't count on a hatchet.
And the cash for for clunkers thing.
Yeah, and that's actually the last one in our fleet that wouldn't.
Qualify for.
For diesel emissions.
Grant has to be a running truck, so we don't wanna run this one to the ground.
Right, for that one, so.
And we could actually, forty-five days to your point, Jonathan, this one, truck one, might be until December, November, or January of next year before we even get it back.
Newer would be better for sure.
Um, this one would be forty-five days, which is November fifteenth, if we could do it today.
It's a lot of money to put into a truck we're not gonna keep.
Question for, so for the the current truck we have at Earl's right now, I'll just give you a quick brief on this, I'm looking at the email, apologize for no printing it out, so you can actually look at it, but. Cleanup and replace pipe from turbo to muffler has lots of leaks, pull front wheels, left side brakes are missing, roller hub and seal is leaking, replace lower steering shaft U-joint, replace left right. Left rear brake hose, front, front PTO shaft for the hydraulics is loose and wobbling, needs replacement before it goes through the radiator, adjust clutch if possible. Replace forward rear torque rod, right tie rod loose, needs replacing, set tow in, lots of lights and wiring need to be addressed, which is one of the prime reasons we sent it there, thinking that that was like the worst issue with it. Um, coolant leak on side of engine unknown, estimated cost five thousand to seventy-five hundred. Stuff we are not fixing that keeps it from passing inspection, frame is separating in lots of spots due to rust jacking. Rear suspension crossmembers between frame, braking bolts due to rust, also metal is getting thin, both steering boxes are leaking, rear input yoke loose and seal leaking. Driver's side kingpin loose, should do both, engine mounts, air tanks, rear main seal or input seal of trans is leaking and bell housing, injector harness on engine is leaking oil around plug. Light boxes on dump, backup alarm, no air horn, no AC. Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I don't, I don't do it to, you know, as a cry for help, but uh, I think you need to understand what's actually what's wrong with that.
Reality, that's reality, and then another part, another part of reality is, we're on a nationwide strike, you may not even be able to get the parts.
If I wanted to comment on that too, when Joel was saying, I know for a fact the area body shops have already been notified, that parts that they had coming in are not.
Are not coming in, so that's that's the next thing that bothers me.
Yep.
Where can we come up with?
I say we, I say if the board is amenable, we um, I'm gonna make some motion that we cancel the Freightliner, the Freightliner that's already on order, and then we order the new ten wheeler. Uh, allocate the money that was already allocated from ARPA funds from the Freightliner and. But we'll come up with the money, just.
We need fifty-one thousand. This is why my hair.
Unfortunately.
Before you guys.
Before we do, we can discuss a little more.
Before you do, this is a quote you're welcome to look at, this is for the ten wheeler from these guys, and also the truck, the cab would come in white. If we want it red to match the rest of our fleet, we're looking at five to. He didn't say, um, it's five thousand for the medium duty truck, so it's, it looks nice white. I know, that's what I said, I don't care.
It's easier to clean, winter camels.
A red sticker.
Unfortunately, I have roads, we have so many dirt roads and bad roads, it really does, I know from my own car, it eats up your equipment in your car and your vehicles, which is phenomenally.
What do you think, Mark? You're looking pretty heavy at that.
Just, just started looking.
These are all those stats on that Western Star forty-seven X, which would be the truck that would be if we were to go with that.
How much are we, we cook in metal when we junk it? Couple thousand?
The the ten wheeler tandem? Yeah, probably a couple thousand. So best case scenario, we get the diesel emission grant for approximately fifty to what, fifteen thousand, I think is what they gave us for the last one.
That's an if.
If, right, I'm saying best case scenario, if and this is for truck.
I don't count on scenarios. I always count on what I got.
Yeah.
But we will go after it, I'm just not counting on it until we get it.
Sure, sure.
Is there any surprises, like all of a sudden we're gonna get it here, and we're gonna say, oh, we gotta have this, this that goes with our equipment that we have?
And it's another twenty thousand?
Right, is there anything, not, it's gonna go to all the equipment that we have, put on a rig?
When we go to pick it up, it's gonna have the prop plow and the wing plow either in the in the dump body or hop right on the truck to drive it home and ready to go to work.
Like I was saying, it's a unique situation where people selling the chassis and the outfitting equipment, so you don't run into any of those clashing problems between all that, it's, well, that's his.
Now, they have this in stock now, so we don't run into the problem of of uh being shut down with the auto industry, and they tell you you can get it, and all of a sudden, ooh.
He's got.
There it is.
So, right here, this is a six-wheeler, this is, this is a six-wheel version of the truck that we're discussing getting. Um, he's got a ten wheeler cabin chassis coming in. He says specifically when it was gonna be in it, it was, we got a lot of information out of it, but.
It was, it was getting made in all that law.
In a different location, yeah.
So he has, he physically has it in his inventory.
Yeah.
I believe, that's what he said.
And then they get us, they outfit it, and we go there, and we turn the key. Sign, you know, do what we gotta do, and turn the key, and drag the thing home then there.
Well, how do you feel, Mark?
It's a lot of money.
A lot of money, so.
Paid for it for three hundred thousand dollars. But if if they can guarantee that we would have it by a certain date.
Forty-five days.
If they ordered it today, it'd be November fifteenth.
Right.
But by the time you get it real time, it'd probably be a good two weeks before everything paperwork and all that's done, so it's, it's Thanksgiving week.
And I don't know, uh, due to not ever doing one myself personally before, the diesel emission grant, I don't know if we can actually order the truck if we're gonna apply for the grant.
Yeah.
You can't.
Until we get approved for the grant.
Correct.
So we gotta come up with fifty thousand. Someplace, and then back to it after we apply and if we get the grant. How do you feel about it, Alan?
You know, makes sense, never gonna get ahead of it if we don't start replacing trucks.
Well, we can't keep a two thousand six on our road.
You feel that way too?
Yeah, I think we have to.
Mark?
So much money into that.
All right, we have a motion.
Alan already made the motion.
Motion to cancel, but. We're not gonna put that money toward this new truck.
Uh, is that what seconded?
She'll second it, any more comments or questions by the board?
Thank you for going, you guys, and for picking it out.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Hopefully the one ton. The last winter.
Well, between that.
Marketing season's in that.
Between that and the, the uh, the backup truck, six wheeler that we purchased that came from Ludlow last year.
That would help.
I think, I hope.
Even the situation in passing where only one salt truck, right, and now technically you have two.
Correct, yeah, well, what we did before was we put, we put the salt in the oldest tandem truck.
Yeah.
So as not to destroy the frame and body on the other trucks faster, and yeah, it's.
I wish they'd make them out of stainless steel.
Make the body better a little bit now.
All right, anything else, Joel? Any other?
I think those are good enough.
Um, Morse Hall's gonna get paved next. Not. Uh, next Monday, next Monday, so Pike will be doing that.
Okay.
So, that's, that's nice, fresh asphalt on the road.
That's good.
So what should, what should we do with the truck, up at Earl's? Should tell them to stop it?
They're already on hold.
On hold, yeah.
Yeah.
Should we retrieve it, where should we do it?
Oh, yeah, we'll definitely, we'll have to bring it back to our garage and.
Yeah.
And find out. Oh yeah, we'll definitely, we'll have to bring it back to our garage and then find out how we're.
Yeah, we're not gonna put a cent in truck.
We are still gonna attempt the DARE grant, correct?
We'll talk about it.
Can I give you an extra offer?
So it's on hold right now, truck one. All right. Thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions for Joel?
Thank the crew.
Who's gonna activate order this truck? Somebody has to.
Or call him over.
Yeah.
I was thinking free to be honest with you.
I wouldn't have power ball.
Yeah, I would be the same.
Okay. On the community development.
You? Yeah, that's me. Um, so we, I, I asked Paul to add a new um, item on the, a standing item on the agenda so that we can split up work that I'm doing for the town. The work that um, I am involved with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission as the, as a board member. So I'll have two reports. Uh, but this one will be fast because we have uh, the Town to Trails Consultant, Ollie Joe, who will uh, give us a presentation on the Better Connections project after this. Um, so for today, I, you may have noticed that there was a community site visit in, in Polton today. That was the downtown board. Um, they came to Polton as part of the uh, downtown designation renewal that uh, PDRC had to do to keep its status as a designated downtown every eight years. So we had a really great visit. Um. They were very appreciative of all the work and all the happenings that have been going on in Polton and we, we went to um, the Regional Planning Commission, the hub actually, for presentation. Uh, Jay newly presented as president of the PDRC. Nick helped us with the um, with the site visit and uh, the renewal was granted today. So we are still a designated downtown. Incentives that that brings. Um, so that was today. Um, last week, I found out on Thursday that three of the buildings that the town submitted for the municipal energy resilience program were awarded. Uh, so we have a level one assessment coming for the town garage, the town office and the Young at Heart Senior Center. Sarah, absolutely. So Paul, between Paul and I, we will be um, going out to each of those locations and um, assessing with the contractor that is chosen. I believe it's by the RGC. Um, Maggie is my main contact for that one. Um, and then I just wanted to mention, I, I don't know if it's been brought up in the select board meeting, but um, the senior center did a wonderful job with the dedication of the pavilion and the walking center to, to join us this past Saturday. Um, that was a, uh, it was a really lovely ceremony. Uh, we had a lot of community come out and yeah, yeah.
Lot of people, a lot of.
Yeah, quite a few, a lot of speakers, yes. Cheryl wore shorts.
Honor Jonathan. Shorts on.
And so as a segue to that, I'll hand it over to Paul for his town managers report, but that was uh, one of the areas that we studied from Town to Trails and Better Connections report.
So I've got, the first thing on the agenda under town managers was the Town to Trails. Um, uh, Emily from DeBois and King is, I hope Emily, are you still on there, Emily?
Hi, I'm here.
Emily Lewis from DeBois and King is gonna um, give a presentation to the board about uh, the final report that the, our consultants have done in connection with uh, Town to Trails. So if you want to take it from here, Emily.
Great, thank you so much. Um, do I have permission to share my screen? Yeah, it looks like it.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks so much for having me. Uh, so I'm Emily Lewis. I'm one of the consultants with DeBois and King. Uh, and we are joined by uh, in addition to our team, Rebecca Stone from Community Workshop, a lot of the community engagement and wonderful uh, group uh, that was part of the steering committee. So this, the entire report is well over a hundred pages, so I'm not gonna go through all of that. I have put together kind of selection um, of the three different, different chapters uh, that, that we put together here. So we're looking. They're pulled into what we learned. So looking at the existing conditions, a lot of the work that um, love information uh, about Poltony that guided this project. And then our book two is the big ideas, including routes to town, gateways, main streets and side streets, and outdoor recreation hub. And then finally, book three is implementation. So I'll take you through some components of each of those. Uh, the goals for this really came out of the RERC process that happened a couple of years ago. Uh, that include linking the town to the trails, to expand year-round recreational assets throughout the town, building pride in Poltony, creating outdoor, create community outdoors and make Poltony known. And so throughout the report, uh, we've tried to really note where we're addressing those different goals. Uh, so you see on here all the partners and people that worked to put this all together. Uh, I'll thank Nick in particular, cause I know that he, see that he's on. So thanks for his work and, and Sarah and Paul in particular as well. So the project was kicked off back in February of two, of twenty twenty-two. And this graphic just shows a little bit of some of the main points that came up throughout this process. Some of the, the site visits and sight walks, uh, engagement that was done. That we had a bunch of different uh, open houses or different engagement events. And then a big open house uh, in June, it was called Poltony Comes Together. Hopefully some of you were able to be a part of that where we presented a bunch of the different ideas that we had come up in conjunction with a lot of other wonderful groups that are in Poltony. Uh, this past summer, the Vermont Department of Health Quick Build Grant for uh, benches and kiosks were, was initiated and we are gonna be wrapping up this report uh, at the end of this week, turning it all over to you. So first book, what we learned, again, just certain selections from this is not showing the, the complete report. So this is all of the different elements that are part of this chapter of the book, uh, and starting with looking at Poltony's context and then the trails, uh, routes to downtown and then downtown Poltony and kind of three, three different elements. As I said, there's a lot of community engagement that went into this and I, I, in this short amount of time, I will be able to to, do justice to the, the wonderful work of Rebecca Stone from Community Workshop and all of the participants from, from the town as part of it. Uh, she started off last spring through the summer and fall of twenty twenty-two doing uh, pop-up planning work, pop-up crosswalk, lots of different input from, asking from, from folks. What is your favorite thing to do in Poltony? Uh, wishes for outdoor recreation and more that were all incorporated uh, into that. And the second half of the community engagement, um, this year included a lot more discussions and workshops and commencing with that or uh, resulting in that big ideas open house. And all of those community or those community engagement ideas from last year, uh, pulled, were pulled pulled together to determine what these big ideas are gonna be, what it were, what does Poltony want to see proposed. So briefly, the con- context, and as the name of the project suggests, Town to Trails, looking at uh, where are the trails within Poltony and starting to consider uh, what connections might need to be made to connect those networks. And we looked at the trail access as well as another part of determining those routes to trails. And you'll see kind of all this reflected um, in the later sections of this presentation and the report. Moving into the roots downtown, community conversations, people really love the high quality uh, of, of events and things that are in Poltony, but really want better signage, information, roads, connections, uh, improvements to, to trailheads and visibility of that. So some of these connections uh, that, that were, were discussed were around New England Slate where there's a potential to connect both the long route thirty and through some of uh, some private landowner properties to get up to this trail connection on the other side of Thrall Road. Uh, similarly, this intersection down at Old Lake and Route thirty and over over here on Route one forty, uh, but getting, getting a better connection across the road there, safer, more visible. Downtown Poltony input. People really love the downtown and Main Street, the streetscape there, all the, how close the amenities are. Would like to be able to spend more time, more variety of places, uh, more things to do. So we narrowed into Poltony, looking at both Main Street as well as some of the adjacent streets throughout there. Narrowing it on, on Main Street, looking at what the, what does the street section look like? What are the, what are the businesses and the elements that are along there? Uh, the Regional Planning Commission did a parking study. Uh, that's a part of this report, looking at, is there enough parking? Where is it? Where is it heavily used? What improvements might need to be made to that? And then one of the things that came out of the RERC process was the, was the idea of gateways. So there are three main gateways that, that were reviewed at Main Street and Route thirty, Furnace and Route thirty and Main Street and the rail trail. A little bit of a deeper dive into looking at that crossing at the rail trail. Uh, some of the things that were identified, safety concerns, limited visibility, um, when paint, when painting gets redone there. And took those into our future concepts. Like I have the last main thing that we looked at were these downtown parks and open space. See, seeing what does Poltony have to offer and how can those assets be connected? And that drove this idea of an outdoor recreation hub. We looked at different recreation hubs throughout the state and determined several traits that are crucial to their success, such as parking visibility, current use, proximity businesses, trail adjacency. And the committee started looking at potential different sites uh, within the, the greater downtown area uh, that could address some of those. So all of that information and much more that I did not go through takes us into book two, which is the big ideas. And in these four focus areas, routes to town, gateways, streets and the outdoor recreation hub. So roots to town, really looking at three, uh, three or four different things. East Poltony Green, Thrall Road, Old Lake Road intersection at Route thirty. Uh, Route thirty from Furnace to New England Slate and Route one forty at Fairground. And that last one, that connection across the road has already been done and updated. East Poltony Green, I get the, gonna try to go fairly quickly through these. We can certainly come back to any of those. The idea of potentially uh, adding a sidewalk to complete that connection uh, at that eastern, eastern end of East Main Street. Thrall Road, looking at reconfiguring, potentially reconfiguring that intersection so it's safer for uh, users coming to more at a ninety-degree angle uh, with a little bypass for cyclists through there. And then Furnace Street to New England Slate, looking at both short-term and long-term ideas for improvements along Route thirty to make it more, uh, to make it safer, more accessible for cyclists. And then I definitely want to touch on what Slate Valley Trails has been doing with their landowner agreements that go from the D and H rail trail up to Route through to here and then from New England Slate, uh, all the way up to Thrall Road. They have, believe they have, have landowner agreements um, through that entire route summit for one year and some for ten years. So that's a really uh, great thing to see with that moving forward. Mentioned our downtown gateways in the last section. So looking at the southern, we're calling the southern gateway at Furnace Street, added, potentially adding some signage, brick walls to mimic some of the, the architecture uh, elsewhere in Poltony. Excuse me. Enhanced landscaping and all of these would have to be looked at more in depth to ensure their safety uh, along, alongside the road there. Next gateway is, we're calling the central gateway at Beaman and Main. Uh, some ideas for adding enhanced crosswalks. We started looking at this idea of perhaps rail, railroad, crosswalks that mimic the railroad to tie into that, that rail trail. And I was so coordinated with V-Trans to confirm that that assignment would be um, permissible uh, from a, from a regulatory and safety standpoint. Uh, one other thing that came up was potentially changing the, the strong traffic lights to metal melted pole arm. And it's a real, real opportunity here at this corner if that one property that's current, currently vacant should ever be redeveloped. And then the, and the third gateway is at the rail trail. Could be enhanced again by the same type of uh, treatment along the roadways. Uh, potentially a pergola to really uh, to show that this is an entrance to the rail trail. And some ideas for potential trail lighting. And I know that there are some uh, kiosks and signage that are being updated or improved as a part of uh, that grant from the Department of Health. There's a lot for downtown streets. So again, I'll go, try to go through that somewhat quickly. Uh, we're looking at kind of three mains, main sections, church or Main Street, surrounding streets, including uh, church, depot, uh, Furnace Streets and then, and then parking is a separate element. So different ideas that kind of came up for Main Street include uh, improved uh, parking access for, for handicap parking. Uh, rain garden bump outs, perhaps at crossings, at crosswalks. Uh, murals, which I know is already an initiative that's going, that is going on in, in the village area. Uh, and kind of throughout here, again, you see that idea of like the colored, colored asphalt. Um, and that railroad tracks crosswalk continuing through. Uh, some side streets noting that there is trying to dedicate, designate better where the locations for parking is along Depot, perhaps formalizing that along Church Street. Uh, improvement of sidewalks along Church Street and additional uh, connections from church over to Beaman Street. Oh, there we go. As I mentioned, uh, the Rutland Regional Planning Commission did a parking study in this area as well, looking at capacity um, and use. And this page goes a little into detail there. Uh, one of the things that came out of that was noting that a lot of the cars within that, this, the area during the time of the study were parked improperly or in no parking places. Which indicates perhaps the need to rethink how some of those, those portions of the street are designated and how can we try to get people to park properly in there? We looked at outdoor recreation hub. First, we during one of the virtual workshops that we had on Zoom, people really started noting all of the great resources that were, are already in Poltony. So continue to update our map with a lot of these, these resources. And discussed how could those perhaps be leveraged to be able to be utilized a little bit more by members of the public. And then during the, the open house, we had people vote on what their preferences were for different uh, potential locations for outdoor recreation hubs. Some were determined not to be appropriate. Um, some, there are a few that were added in there that people had interest in. Um, so all of these, of course, would have to go through a lot more conversation, discussion uh, with the town, with potential landowners uh, to, to determine what might be appropriate here. And put together this kind of really broad list of desired amenities and priorities that people thought would be would be desired for this outdoor recreation hub. And those include trail maps and information, bathrooms, uh outdoor pavilion, indoor community space, business directory. And and that was all determined through public engagement and then coordination with the steering committee. And since that could take perhaps quite a bit of time, uh we also put together this idea of a temper of an interim or temporary recreation hub, potentially using the former village office site. And with a little bit of additions, this could be a spot that could be used while other locations take their time to to go through um purchase and development. And then book three, implementation. This is, you could see this really, really broad list of implementation projects that we have put together. And I've uh pulled out about four of them that I'll go in a little bit more depth to. But I just wanted to show really the uh the breadth of work that that uh came out of this project. And some of the things that we're looking at it as priority, um the level of desire uh for for doing these projects and that came out of conversations with the steering committee uh and the public engagement, the timeframe uh for when it should start, the duration, uh who is going to be, who are the partners or leadership, uh potential cost and funding sources and risks and challenges. And we put have this summary uh initially here, so you kind of go through and and look pretty quickly to see uh what is the priority for these projects uh put together in these different sections, starting timeframe, duration, potential costs, and then this project scoring, which kind of looked at all of these categories and gave uh uh gave this uh this pulled out this number that is just again, another way to help prioritize um where things might begin. Uh this page is project summary that kind of goes through how we came to to determine what projects were going to be a part of this project. Again, a lot of community input that that came about um prior to developing this implementation. So the first one that I'll go over is looking at that furnace to Furnace Street to New England Slate connection. I mentioned the work that Slate Valley Trails has already done throughout there. And so we have kind of two proposals here, one is for short term and then the next page is for long term improvements. And so short term improvements are things that could be could be uh like shareo markings, which are like these little um if you're not familiar with them, little markings that get painted on the road in the shape of a bicycle and some arrows that indicate to drivers that they're going to be sharing the road with cyclists. Other options could be reduce lane width over uh the bridge at the Poltony River. To and for this, just this short stretch here. And then longer term projects uh would could be would be more along the lines of adding additional widths to the roadway, um either adjacent to the road or an off-road trail. Uh the rail trail is another one that we want to talk about, so over some of the some of these ideas um in the big ideas chapter. This gets down into a little bit more of the details of how you would go about that. Um there are some updates that are still being done to to this page based on some Vtrans comments, um such as making sure that we um indicate the appropriate required widths of pergola um and how those those railroad crossings uh could be done and permitted and and then move into additional rail trail elements further along the trail. Similarly with pergolas, lighting, uh art that could be along there. I know those we had mentioned those kiosks and benches are already being installed and could look to if there are other locations that might be appropriate to add throughout there. All right, for uh for streets, uh another short term and long term would be for Church Street. So short term projects could be crosswalks, parking, delineation, markings and access management techniques. Uh so looking at particularly where uh near the the rail trail crossing where there are uh a lack of sidewalks. And different options here for uh perhaps for slowing traffic. And then a longer term project would be doing a scoping study that would look at the feasibility of adding those sidewalks uh where they currently uh are missing and including that the crosswalk connection across across Beaman Street to connect to the existing sidewalk on the east side of it. We've also included pages that talk about some of those quick actions that can be done. Uh so this applies to that entire uh section for streets. And there are things such as uh do a walk audit, um temporary ball ballots, shareo markings. Then the last element we talked about is that outdoor recreation hub again. So site selection, okay, go into a little bit more detail about some of those about those sites and recommendations for um reviewing, determine conducting a site assessment to determine potential costs with locations, uh what what uses might need to be relocated, what kind of infrastructures available and negotiations with with property owners. Which then hopefully would lead to the design, development and construction, which would be a process in and of itself. To include the outdoor site design, architectural design, if the site were going to include a new new building and as well as indoor and outdoor programming. And that is everything that I have. I'm happy to go back through any portions of this or um pull up any of the any pages from the report that I did not go over and show as well.
Questions?
How do we get a copy of this?
Uh so I will be sending out our final copy to uh the members of the steering committee, which includes Sarah and Paul.
And then you can just email them to us.
Uh yes, and we could also put it on the uh poltonyplanning.com website is probably what will end up eventually.
For everybody can see it. All right.
Yes.
Any questions, anybody?
Thank you so much, Emily, for the nice report.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Lot to take in.
And that is a lot to take in. Lot of light reading.
We have a lot of time to take it in, but a year and a half to get to this point. So thank you, Emily. I know that uh this project was uh long and a little arduous, so we appreciate your commitment.
So what does it mean? She said she's turning it over to us. What's that mean?
Implementation.
So what does that mean?
That means.
The committee gets together. We don't see Emily anymore, committee get together and it's more than five people and people work on putting it together. That's my big question.
It means you have a, it means you have a um comprehensive plan. And then uh the plan has at least from the community perspective, at least the community members that participated in in it. Uh the um you know, the items that they prioritize. And so then the the town has the plan that they can see funding to implement some of the things that have been prioritized.
So do we put out as far as getting media involvement that want to continue to be part of it or part of that piece or?
So I just pulled up on the screen um a a page that I didn't didn't share while I was going through that presentation. And kind of what we have is this this first step, which is establish steering committee and project plan. So there's been a steering committee that's been a part of this project. But um it it's looking for the need to identify resources or volunteers uh to go through all of of these recommendations that follow. And so that's why we also tried to put together um, you know, these uh the action summary in different orders of priority and um and the project summary, so it's kind of easy to hopefully easy to look at um in pieces.
In pieces. That's very good. Thank you. Thank you, Emily.
Thanks.
We got, it sounds like now is we have some work. A lot of work.
A lot of good information, yes.
Going through this process probably helps us during funding from different organizations that they've done all this background work.
Absolutely.
Comes down to the mighty dollars, I mean that's millions of dollars of improvements right there.
With their plan, to your point, we have a, we have a plan right now that Emily and everybody made for us. Now it's just we have to pick which ones we want to start and get maybe knock out the quick and easy ones first while we're building on the harder ones, like like uh the hub, the big hub. You know, so I guess we got to start there. First thing to do is to read it. And that's what we'll do. We'll read it, go through it thorough thoroughly. We'll have to probably start a committee again to see about an implementation committees. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the more people you can get involved.
The better.
You know, there's the old saying, many hands may light work.
So we'll read it.
We tried to design particularly the implementation chapter as you can, if you wanted to pull that chapter out of the whole report, that could stand alone. If you wanted to pull one section, say like the roots to town or the outdoor recreation hub, you could pull that section out and it could stand alone. Or if you wanted to pull one page out of a specific project, that could then stand alone.
That might be a better way to attack it. Yeah, all right. We got to start.
Got a report.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so um next on the agenda is the discussion uh referencing the appeal of the Poltony Property LLC BCA decision. You may recall that the assessor came to our last meeting and urged this board to appeal the decision of the BCA, uh their assessment decision on the Poltony Properties property. Um so I guess three members, two of the members of this board were on that BCA committee. Uh and one of them, and you were on.
Site visit committee.
And you were actually on the board, the decision as well.
Yep.
So I don't know who wants to, who wants to address that matter.
At this point in time, I I I feel that we should probably not appeal and make sure that legally it's because if we don't have a quorum, I mean, I I, right now, I would say not appeal and 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 just go on and go on. Because we, I thought we went through it the right way.
We met, we looked at certain accusations, we went over it and felt that looking at the paperwork from the Treasury report, we felt that we didn't want to make any changes.
I agree.
That's that's all we have. We need a motion for that.
So I mean, I guess if someone wants to make a motion either way, appeal the decision or don't appeal the decision. It's it's this board's prerogative.
Are there a motion to appeal or not appeal?
Can I make, can I make a motion not to appeal the BCA's decision?
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any oppose? Motion carry not to appeal.
Did I hear all in favor or?
I heard. One, two, three, but I didn't hear from Mark.
I have to abstain.
Abstain, one abstain.
And Val, you you agree with the motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, um at our last meeting, we had chosen a date to do road reclassification. Um hearings, I mean, the site visits. Um I didn't, I was, unfortunately, I fell under the weather, so I was unable to to get those notices of the um hearings out. I have 30 days to have to notify the affected landowners and I wasn't able to to do it because of my inability to be at the office. Um so I think we had to pick another date.
So we hit it down for the 16th, correct? Monday to 16th.
Monday, October 16th.
That's all we're changing.
That's the one we're changing. It was for Monday, October 16th.
Yep.
So we're looking at now probably into November, Paul?
I would say, yeah, early first week of November, second of November.
November 6?
And I do know that the board had suggested having.
Having it on a board meeting night?
No, having the same, the same. We're talking about two different roads that you've considered reclassifying. And I think the board had said they would try to tackle both of them on one evening. I I I think particularly now that we're going to be going into November, given that it gets darker.
We better do it.
So you might want to do
Split it up.
Two evenings. That, you know, just so you give each each of the hearings fair consideration.
Oh, what can we do, people?
At the 6th and the 20th, 6th and the 20th, unless we go early before a select board meeting. It gets dark early, so we could do it four four o'clock on the 6th and 20th.
I mean, you could also do it, you know, one on one day, one on the next day.
Let's say the 6th of the.
6th or 7th? 6th and the 7th of November? Or?
Today's gonna work.
I do know Tuesdays are difficult for me.
Tuesdays are difficult. How about 8, 9 November?
Yeah.
Is that okay, Paul?
That's fine. I think that's fine with me.
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, we'll meet here.
Can you do four o'clock?
Yeah. Paul, it doesn't smell.
November 4th?
Four o'clock on November 8th and 9th.
Is there a preference on what?
Doesn't matter. We can meet here and then figure out which one we're going to go to.
Well, I mean, if we, I've got a notice, November 8th or X Road or November 9th. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Four o'clock, meet here.
Mark, four o'clock.
Four o'clock, we'll meet here, Mark. Meet here on the 8th and four o'clock on November 9th.
Okay, uh I have a note here on the East Poltony Gorge Bridge. I I've been trying to pin the state down to give me a date certain of when that project is going to be done. If we know it was supposed to be done in September 22nd. To the, I I haven't been able to get them, give me a date certain or even an estimate, um but I'm trying to get them to give me a, give me two weeks, give me three weeks, just tell me so because people are asking me. I'm sure they're asking members of the board as well. And I I kind of put it on this agenda optimistically, hoping that I could have a more solid answer.
Is there a penalty that 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 uh date that they're supposed to be done by in the contract and that they aren't? Is there a penalty phase in this?
There, I mean, I'm not familiar with all the um intricacies of the contract between the state and Miller Construction. As I understand it, there there are penalties for not meeting the the contract date. But I do know there's some carve outs for weather exceptions, I think, you know, for some of the.
That's negotiated with the state.
Correct. So I can't say I'm not in a position to say, oh, they, you know, it's X amount of dollars per day. Um they did give me indication when I last. They did give me indication when I last spoke to them that due to weather and, and some other unforeseen things that they were going to go over. And that when they're done, that's when the state and the, the state will basically say, here's what your penalty is, is my understanding, but I don't know what it is. I can't, I can't say, I can't say, so I'm.
But we're not talking like, I think people are saying we're not talking months and months.
I don't know. I don't know. That's why I'm trying to get.
There's no.
Trying to get a commitment of.
No number on it.
Give me.
Looks good.
An estimate. I do know, you know, it's, you're, you're now getting towards the end of your paving season. So, and this was always talked about, from my recollection, during some of these discussions that the paving may be a leftover thing. I'm not saying that they're, they're giving me indication that that's, but I just know time wise, you're getting toward, close to your end of paving season.
Okay.
So, okay. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen.
Yeah, we have, we don't know yet. It's still a mystery. Nancy do not allow this best.
Don't know whether it has been, anyone's friends or not.
No, it has not.
Um, I do have a note on here about the South Street Bridge and I provided copies of the correspondence I received from the structured project manager, Robert Kleinfeldter. He has attached to there and there's a link that you can see the conceptual plans. He would appreciate comments from this board. If this board has any comments by October 13th. So I will email the board. Cause then you can just click the link instead of, you know, typing it from my hard copy here. And you can see what the conceptual plan is. And whether or not the board has comments or questions about that. He'd like them by, by October 13th, so.
After that, will, after that, does it go out to the public to see or how does that?
It's still on the, it's on the website, but it's accessible to the public.
And they'll do the same thing they're doing now. They update, I mean, they're very good about updating the bridge, all the emails that we get about bridge update, what they're doing.
I imagine so. You mean during the construction period? I imagine so. I do, um, you know, for this board or anybody else that are, are anxious. They, they, Mr. Kleinfeldter has indicated that construction is currently planned to begin November of 2025. Expecting to last at least two full construction seasons. They're estimating it's a seven and a half million dollar project, which would be 80% funded by federal funds, 20% by state. And that they intend to paint the, the bridge green like it is now.
Like 50% by town.
Yeah, zero, yeah. That's, that's nice. So. I did, as a joke, when they asked us about the color of the East Poltony Gorge Bridge, I did tell the engineers that we wanted fluorescent orange. He said, what? That was just a joke. No, you have to. You have to use intense humor.
Funny if he went up there and it was a bright orange. There are a few people on your team.
Yeah, that's a great pumpkin Charlie.
Um, so take a look at that. We have, you know, at our next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda and see if anyone knows. Comments that you want me to send them, send. Um, that's all I have for the moment. I didn't know how much, how long Emily's report was going to be, so I. I have a lot of time for them.
Kate, anything else? Anybody have anything for Paul?
No, but I do have something to bring to the board.
Kate, we'll go under Transact and the other lot. We'll slot board business.
Oh, okay.
There we go. We're there.
The, uh, the communication district that we joined two and a half years ago is coming along. I do have some paperwork here if anybody here to read it.
Coming along, meaning they're going up Hampshire Hollow next week or?
No, no. The bad news is we, we have been classified as phase two at the moment. Not phase one, phase two.
Put on the back burner.
Well, no, I, I talked to a main person for today. And there's an email she sent me. Um, so this is the map, if, if, if anybody hears.
This is really the highest speed internet.
Yes, this is fiber, fiber optics of the town. There's 18 towns involved. Brandon started it. We joined in fabric almost three years.
At least two years, yeah, at least two.
My dad, they said it was at no cost towns, but now.
No, still no costs, but.
We still don't have it though, so we have hot spots. Any cost, don't have anything.
That's it, that's it. Email, well, I, I communicated to her and put her, the block. And she feels that it will get rolled in. It's walking down to money. Overall project is 14.5 million. We have 9.5 million. But in this, in next, and if I do have.
What about 9.5 million from that?
I don't.
Purple Monday. But and you told them that half the people that live here that live out are paying the same price as everybody else and we don't get. That's why I tried to tell them one day.
I know.
We don't get anything.
Well, no, you get some.
No, we don't get, I, I came here today as a matter of fact to do, and if I was on Zoom again for work, I'd have a really hard time doing it. So if something happened with the COVID again and everyone was home.
We have been trying, but there's, there is a $230 million pool out there from the feds that we are.
227 million? 229 million?
Right, 229 million is from the feds, but they want every, every little shack, every, every hut and camp done with fiber optics of any road. So.
Exactly doing the main road, but if, the other thing is not just my house, because I can complain too, but I can come and sound. But my thing was if there's bikers, which were, have all these trails and they're stuck and my bike kids were at bike camp and they're up in the mountain and something happened, they have no cell service, they have nothing, how do they call, remember, how they get home?
Yes, it has nothing to do with cell.
Yeah, no, I know, but that was just one thing we talked about. It's like you have to be able to figure something out so they can do that. That's what I can do. I got my problem.
Right. They were trying to do that.
Yeah, we don't, we just said we're sorry, we can't do it, we can't get something.
Right. It's, and it's partly because Poltony does have good service and talent and the other, there's a system.
They put a lot of hot spots in, which is really lucky. Like East Poltony Store is a hotspot, here has a hotspot, so we did do that piece. But it doesn't help the people that are out, we have all our dirt roads. It doesn't help a lot of people that are on the dirt roads, that have families that are on the dirt roads.
And not, but it, not, no, I'm trying to get it into phase one.
Sorry.
What's the time of phase two?
What's, right now, we are on phase two.
What's the timeline of phase two? Is that 28?
No, no.
22.5.
Has phase one started? It's going to start next week.
Is this, now phase, to move up to phase one, do we have to complete different sections of phase one? Get it completed and go down into?
No, no, it's walking down.
What classifies it as phase two, just money?
The, the fact that we had, yeah, well, they picked, said they picked certain towns that had less communication ability. The Poltony is somewhat to communicate with, why, that we, that we have cables and stuff.
We should be 100% compliance with everything that's going on where a town to trails. They should look at Poltony in a different light and make it phase one.
We are according to, to Laura for today. It is a good chance by the time the buildup starts, we will be included in, in the building. Guaranteed.
I've been, I'm not, I'm not picking on you, but I've been told it's from Terry from you. Don't worry about, don't worry about, it's coming, it's coming. This is three and a half.
I know. How long have you been out lived on that road?
Since eight, 1985.
Okay, well, a few more years, you can.
You don't have dialogue. But it's bumper, I can't even watch a movie or something without bumping, so it's crazy. No one else knows how that is unless you. Ask Carol when she did it, she can't even call out.
The movie. I'm ready to shoot myself.
Get the whole scene, come with DVD.
Oh, my God.
You gotta ask them. Okay, Mark.
I didn't want to.
They should have said, Mark.
Who, wow.
Just Jeff's point. Sorry.
Every month.
Mark, I have written, uh, letters of support and letters to the CUD in the past. And I think to Jeff's point about planning and development that's happening in this region that we should be relying more heavily perhaps on the regional planning commission and some of the funds that they have, the ARPA funds that are coming out from the state. And also my role in this community to put some pressure off. So for what that's worth, I'm happy to help.
Which floor is it saying?
It's lower left.
Lower left.
I, I do have a phone number. If you want to talk, talk to me. Very nice.
That dollar is right on the last page there.
I have the email, but I don't know if I have her number.
It's, it's.
Speed reading.
Right. She did say, yes, the more you, you, you bugger us, the more we might be.
Cool.
Ruben's listening to you.
Yeah, okay. Hello, Mark? Hello?
Thank you, Mark.
Rutland Regional Planning Commission and Dale will get to you.
So in my role as the town of Poltony's appointed regional commissioner, I attended the meeting, first meeting that took place in a few months last week at the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Two, the two most important things on the agenda that I wanted to bring to this board was that a memorandum of understanding was signed from the regional commissioners for, to approve the West Central Vermont Studies, which was the comprehensive economic development strategy that's been in development for two and a half years or so with the RPC. So the MOU moved forward. So this is the, um, West Central Vermont region encompasses Chittenden County, Rutland County, Central Vermont and Addison County. So that's good news. In the end, they're headed towards establishing an economic development district with the EDA, which is a federal designation, which will actually open up a whole lot more in terms of economic development opportunities for that region. Um, it's the only region in Vermont that doesn't, isn't operating under an EDD.
Those, those towns you just stated are the only ones left?
Yeah, so there is, uh, there is an EDD that's established on the eastern half of the state. So the western half of the state does not have that designation yet. I don't know what the timeline is for, for that. I mean, if I had to guess, it would probably be another year before they go through the process of getting that established. It could be longer. But the RPC Board of Commissioners signed that MOU. Um, the other thing that happened at the last meeting was that Logan, who is a new planner, taking over Ed Boe's role as the primarily zoning for the communities. Logan has been to the regional, or sorry, Poltony's Planning Commission meeting in terms of the zoning bylaw update and is working with them. But Logan gave a presentation on S100, which is Act 47, which has a lot of, will have a lot of impacts in terms of Act 250 and particularly housing. It was a new type, new legislation that I got for the first time and am starting to think about what has been enacted in Act 47. I would like to propose to the board that we invite Logan to come and make the presentation to the board. That's on a future date.
I'd like to learn a little bit more about Act 47. I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, I think he did a great job with the presentation, but there's a lot. Yeah, yeah, he did. Yeah, he's really.
What's his last name?
Solomon.
Solomon.
But there's a lot, there's a lot within the act that I think is not yet known. There are the housing, I'm not going to get the term right, housing coordinators that are going to be, I think, working through the RPC in the coming few years. So I understand it's to be essentially housing development in village areas, increased density, refill.
Do we have to go through Act 250 or do they sidestep it?
Um, I don't know the details of it yet. I haven't.
Yeah, that's what I want to ask him. I'd like to, I'd like to.
No, there's nothing to do with Act 250.
Oh, you're building something?
No, but that town's townville zone is to be a plump.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Our company has to go through Act 250 down here at Kielbush Street?
Because he's building a much more massive project.
You think a housing development isn't massive?
Well, it depends how many houses.
I think.
That's what I want to talk to him.
Have Logan.
That's what I want to talk to him.
So, yeah, so we can start to think about some of the other development that Poltony's been talking about and how that fits in with what will be happening at Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
And the other thing that happened is that the first meeting of the Braille Trail Council took place with Nick as the lead for the Regional Planning Commission. Um, it was a very well organized, well attended meeting and, um, I don't know, Nick, I hate to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to share a little bit with the select board about the Braille Trail Council, it would be appreciated.
Uh, I think I gave a little spiel last time. Um, not much has changed really. Uh, yeah, as Sarah said, it was well attended. We had a broad section of different stakeholder groups, including, you know, bikers, hikers and of course, snowmobilers. Now really, it's the, um, the lucky part of deciding all the bylaws and the structure of the council and stuff like that before we get to the fun stuff, which will be, you know, trail improvements, uh, streamlining, maintenance.
Maintenance, yep.
Yeah, figuring all that. Uh, yeah, you guys.
Now, those trails, I ask a question. Those trails, they're owned by the state, right? The rail trail.
That's correct.
So are they going to take parts of that and offload it for maintenance, upkeep and stuff in the towns or the counties that they're in?
That is not, uh, that's not the plan currently.
It's not currently.
Yeah, they, they, I'm pretty sure they want to maintain, you know, the maintenance of things. But, you know, that isn't say, I think even currently, uh, the snowmobile clubs have a small.
I'm just looking at budgeting.
Don't, yeah, don't, you, there's no reason to, to expect it to change, yeah.
Okay.
The one thing I would like to say is that, and I'm not sure if this is a select board issue or trustees issue. I haven't asked Paul yet. But, um, uh, Mark was there, Katrin attended and I attended. And the Rail Trail Council needs, um, needs representation from Poltony. Um, I don't know if Nick as the lead is the right person to represent it or if he even wants to. But we may be, I, I am at capacity to be.
Let me know what's going on.
So we may need someone from Poltony to sit on the Rail Trail Council.
Yeah, let me know what's going on. I'd be interested, at least.
So Nick, is you thinking about that? What, did you want to be the head chapter?
I did. I, I haven't spoken to my boss about it yet, but I personally feel a little conflicted about it just in particular because we're setting things up right now and I don't wonder if there'd be any sort of optics of bias, you know, when it comes to how we approach these sort of things. It's, uh.
We'll pick that.
It's just modeled after the Royal Valley. Are they already doing this up there?
That's precisely right. It's a, it's a, it's some state set forth through the transportation planning initiative, uh, these sort of guidelines for how to assemble these councils and that sort of thing. A lot of it is modeled after.
Yeah, sound big, we check.
Uh, right, yeah.
Sarah, let me know. I'll, I'll be interested in that. Even my wife might be interested in that.
Thanks for, thanks for that, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and actually, that's my report.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Oh, I forgot one thing. Sorry, there's more. Um, so just so the, the board knows, uh, the regional committee, so we had to, uh, there are some committees for the regional commission and we had to pick one or the other. Um, and I, so I have joined the regional committee and will be serving as its vice chair. So the regional committee reviews Act 250 and Section 248 applications for Rutland County.
You got your work cut out for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we go to public comments and concerns, is it okay if we ask Dale, how's it going?
I don't get to work on you much when you're busy. Very, because we're down a body there, so a fourth of our force is gone.
Yeah.
Uh, you, Poltony's been busy. I know the sheriff's department's been busy, but my concern is the deputy that we have here is, last day is Friday.
Oh, come on.
How, how do we get reports from Sheriff's Department? How often do we get bills from them? Are they behind on their hours? Are they ahead on their hours? Cause he's not the only. Because he's not the only one leaving. They have three others are leaving.
Is he going somewhere else?
I'm not even telling him yes. Yes, he's going to kill it.
Because Saturday nights are, it's homecoming here.
When is his last night?
He leaves, ends this week.
Because he's supposed to be here for the.
For the chili cookout. And I was going to ask you, Saturday evening, it's, it's homecoming here. It's a big day Saturday here in town with the kids and the chili cookout.
Yeah, I'm working up there days, but I can be up.
Yeah, Saturday night, they have a big dance and there's some characters that maybe need an eye out for. They're acting up. And I was just wondering if anybody was going to be around Saturday evening.
I don't know. That's why, well, another thing, do you ever get a schedule from them?
From?
From the Sheriff's Department?
Or not, we're supposed to, but we rarely do unless there's, unless there's a special event that I specifically say.
The last time I talked to the deputy that worked here, he was working three 12-hour shifts.
So he told us about us?
So he's working here two, two days, 12 hours straight, the next day is eight hours, and then he does his four hours of Wells. We have 32 hours, so.
Yeah.
That's a concern. I do not know what, if we're going to get anybody. They only have, they only have one full-time person that does their top jobs.
Yeah, because we couldn't, when we budgeted last year, we wanted to bump it up to hours and he couldn't guarantee us.
Right.
That he could fill the 40-hour slot.
Well, you discussed bumping it up.
We discussed that.
No, if you, I know you didn't, never said, we want to bump it up, oh, we can't meet it. It was, you discussed that and decided that you didn't want to.
Didn't want to because we didn't want to take a chance.
Yes, I, I do not know, I'm just, before you get blindsided, just to let you know, again, I don't know how they're billing us, how, how their scheduling works out here. I know Thursday night, they put a lot of extra hours in here because there's the domestic piece Polkney that I actually came and helped them out on, and I spent four hours at the hospital with the person that was under arrest. So there was two deputies involved. They were out here maybe a half hour and the rest of the time they're in Rutland at the office doing the paperwork. But it's all on our dime. And most of the time that I see him responding out here is, he's coming from Rutland or West Rutland. So all that time is driving back and forth.
Yeah.
As, as a, I'm not telling you as a cop, I'm still as a taxpayer.
Yeah, that's, that's concerning. That's very concerning.
And as far as the town, are you looking to hire somebody for the town specifically? There's nobody out there. It just isn't.
We can't, that's, you know, we're in, we're in a bit of a pickle.
Every town is. Every place is.
You couldn't even, you couldn't find people to even start a police force.
Not unless you want to throw a lot of money out there. You're going to have to start at $40 to $45 an hour to even think of us getting somebody to come on board.
And that's not without dealing with preps and options.
Yeah.
Getting expensive.
I, I do what I can here, but like I said, we're so busy up there right now, I don't have as much time as I'd like to down here. The other thing that I have, and what's going on with the stops in Farnham Road? Why does that thing keep twisting? I know someone fixed it, now it's right back. I know. I'll take a look, I don't, I don't know. Part of a New York street extension.
Yeah.
For the longest time, the longest time it was.
Someone reported some vandalism to me today on the rail trail down Farnham Road.
Because, because the gates not there anymore.
Town at the end of the rail trail, the gate is.
Farnham Road.
Yeah.
Both gates are gone.
I know.
So we'll get that. I don't know if the state did that for trail maintenance?
Oh, could be trail maintenance.
Get you off of them up.
Yeah, but this machine might, might be.
Might be, they're taking dump trucks down, they're dumping gravel, it's not wide.
It's not wide enough if they got the machines.
I know when they re-did it.
Right.
A few years back, they, they had them down at that time, but then they put those new ones up and.
Very nice, very expensive.
And the other issue is.
This is not good.
Parking here, I don't know if this, the, the rails, the trails, if they're designating that as a spot to get on the rail trail, there's no parking there. Well, people park there. I get, I get complaints from Smiths all the time because they pull in there, they've got the field access right there. So they park in there when they want to get back in if they're doing firework out there. I don't know if the town can think about putting some, a few new parking signs up there to educate people. I have put some warnings on people's windshields. I'm not part of the travel portion of the road.
Okay.
People think it's a straight shot there, it's not.
No.
Road bends right there. If you're coming, you know, eastbound, you can't see somebody coming westbound.
Okay. Paul's writing that down.
Can I just email the sheriff too?
Thanks.
We had two conversations tonight now that weren't very good news.
Sorry. I, I don't know what his plan is because.
Yeah, well, we need to know this.
Right, and he needs to, he needs to address the, the board on something like this because I know when I met here several years ago, he said he was only going to use level three officers, certified officers, and he only has one right now that's doing contract work. And the rumor has it that that person is on their way out as well. Waiting to get an offer from another agency.
This will be all over social media.
So you, for the short terms, you will be able to be up at the, what is it, the pep rally on Saturday? Homecoming on Saturday?
I missed the first pep rally because I had somebody under arrest, so I've been here for all the others.
Yeah, it's Friday night. Saturday nights, they're big games. Friday night's just the pep rally. Saturday is the big homecoming dance after the game.
That gets crazy.
Dave Catman's very last home game ever. Over 50 years.
Yeah, they stopped contracting for any security work there. I don't know why the school board has done that.
I don't know why they have either. Why?
I know Dan Williams questioned me about that, you know, why isn't there anybody at the games anymore? I sense they went to greater up with them, because they've never been asked to do it anymore.
Yeah, we don't, I don't see any security up there on Friday nights.
If they have an S R O, they could pay him overtime like we do ours. I don't know whoever does that with theirs, because he's a deputy.
That's the school's decision and not the town's or the village's.
Yeah.
Of course it affects us. It affects us greatly. All right.
My main reason for, you know, bringing that, I don't know when the deputy's working it. It used to be, you know, a few years ago, I would say most of the time, I'm active Friday, Saturday nights. Work your schedule around that. But now, you know, lately, I see the deputy down here every Friday night, so I'm like, well, I don't think we need two people tripping over each other if there's nothing going on. It looks like we're a little heavy-handed. I don't, I don't want to be that way. That's why I don't know when he's working. I have no idea. A lot of times I'll come out on Sunday.
They used to be pretty good when they started and now it's just like.
He talks about what's his favorite, right?
You got to get online, I think, and look at it, yeah.
Is he eliminated from Wells too?
Oh, we forget, we used to get a link, and he shows, yeah, they also have little coverage of it. There's, I won't say anymore. Yeah, what are you going to do? I always got a headache. And the opposition. I can't pull one out of the air.
All right. Anything else?
Well, I could bring it up.
Anybody have questions for Dale?
Thanks for letting us know.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the heads up.
Yeah.
All right, on to public comments and concerns. Anybody have? Yes?
I have a question regarding the decision that is on the September 11 meeting minutes regarding a rent guarantee to use ARPA funds for the same for a five-year period in connection with a lease agreement between Heritage Family Federal Credit Union, B C, and J M D LLC Leasor for the installation and maintenance of an interactive teller machine at 177 Main Street. Can you explain what the town's involvement in this is?
So when Citizens Bank left Polkney, a number of people, including myself, worked diligently to, to attract a bank to locate in Polkney. J D M LLC is the owner of the old Citizens Bank. One of the reasons why J D M LLC bought the old Citizens Bank was hoping to attract a bank to Polkney. And he, J D M LLC negotiated with, had discussions with Heritage Family Credit Union about putting an interactive teller machine at the, at that building. Heritage didn't want to have any financial output to put a bank anywhere in Polkney or a teller machine or an ATM machine. So this board entered into negotiations with J D M LLC to discuss if we essentially paid for a bank to come to the town for a period of time, would he be able to attract a bank to that building? And that's what the decision was made on September 11th, was this board entered into a rent guarantee whereby we guarantee that the rent will be paid by Heritage Family Credit Union at that location.
Do you know what an ITM is?
A what?
ITM.
An ITM?
This is for an ITM.
Oh, the interact, yeah, yeah, oh, I know.
And they do cost a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I, I do not know what it is.
It's an interactive teller machine. It's, it's as if you were, you drive up to the thing as if you were looking at the teller in.
Yeah.
Bank X. Oh, hey, Nick, what do you want to do today? Make a deposit or here?
$1 million now.
There you go. Right.
So it's, it's like a, it's like, it's like a Zoom thing for, for the ATM machine.
We're, we're into the A I era.
And after, after the union, what it does, at the ATM too, you can access any bank in the network.
So basically what we're doing is we try to get some form of bank here in town.
That was a nice location, because that was the location it was really.
Yes.
It was also makes it for.
Yeah, the infrastructure is right there.
Yeah.
No, I mean, this board, you know, did know that some of the community would say, well, why Heritage? Why not Citizens? Or why not TD Bank or name you any other bank? And really, Heritage was the only one that, you know, that, that, that J D M LLC and, you know, when, when Citizens first left, I know I personally tried to attract a bank here. I know C D Hall was incidentally, I think you were too, wasn't you?
Yeah, when it first.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So that's essentially it in a nutshell.
So in other words, this would not be happening unless the town.
Correct.
Agreed to pay the rent.
Essentially, yeah.
For five years.
Yeah.
How many, how much in the ARPA funds, how much ARPA funds are being used for this?
It's about $22,000, something like that.
Over the five-year period.
Yep.
If something happens, it went out, or something happened to it, we, there's no cost to us.
Yeah, if, if, if Heritage comes along and says, ah, you know what? This isn't working out for us, then this, this board, this town's obligation ceases.
Okay.
If in five months Heritage says, you know, if that, we're going to get more, more customer or clients, it's not, you know, it's not worth our effort.
Right.
Then, then our obligation ceases.
Okay. So we're off, we're off the hook if they pull the plug.
If they pull the plug, or if they, even if they leave your ITM there, if they're not actively having it open to the public, then it's, the, this, the town has no obligation.
You said they're putting it in like that?
Well, I mean, not like, probably not right now.
They started staring down there. They made a hole in the wall.
Isn't the $22,000 the total financial application to the town?
I mean, roughly, I don't, I don't have the calculation in front of me.
Twenty percent.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's.
And we did, we did discuss it quite a bit.
No, no, what happens at the end of five years?
Good question.
Yeah.
But just wait and see what happens.
Another discussion.
I mean, at the end of five years, you hope that Heritage says, well, this was a great business decision, and then it's, then they, they pay the rent.
So, so that'll be revisited at the end of five years?
That's correct, yes.
All right, one more question. Who's J M D LLC?
It's an LLC where the principal is, well, I don't know the structural, I know it's Ryan Davenport.
Oh, it is, oh, it is him. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's the acronym for Ryan.
Yeah, I just tried to look and look up the LLC online today.
It's, it's Ryan, Ryan and Riley Davenport.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have anything?
Trying, we're trying.
Yeah, we're trying.
Really good.
Anybody else have any questions?
Question?
Carol?
Yeah, I know that Sarah's been working on putting information together about the village and town merger. Has there been any discussions between the two boards for an organizational meeting and getting some notice out to the public to see if people are interested in going on the board or on a committee to start things rolling on this? It's been over a year since the vote took place.
I did have a meeting, I had a phone conversation with the town manager of Northfield. Northfield merged in 2014, so they actually reached out to Vermont League of Cities and Towns first because I was trying, looking for recommendations on other communities. And they recommended Northfield because it's around the same size as Polkney, the village and the town combined. And they've had sort of a long-distance, a longer-term lens on, on what happened and how it happened there. So about a week and a half ago, I had a conversation with their town manager who reported that it was very, the community is very happy with it. But I asked them about their process, which is what I, I really wanted to know the most. I think we've been trying to decide whether or not it was worth it to take, to pay a consultant, issue an R F P, pay a consultant to undertake a study here. Northfield did not do that. The community was ready to, to merge, so they did exactly what you just said. They formed a committee between the two municipalities that started to analyze the financials of both and how, how, how a merger might happen. So that was just a couple of weeks ago. I've talked to Paul about it, but I'm not sure, this is the first time I've shared it with the board. So I think the, the municipality needs to decide whether or not it needs additional study from a consultant or if it's ready to go forward with, through a committee.
So maybe we can get that on the agenda and get something, get a discussion on it.
I mean, we, it's, 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 it's a hard lift to, you know, it's not, it's certainly not in my wheelhouse, and I know it's not in Sarah's wheelhouse. So I, I mean, personally and professionally, I, I think a consultant would be the way to go.
And take that load of all of this research off of you guys?
I mean, I think that's the way to go. Whether, you know, whether or not the village agrees with me or even this board agrees with me, the village trustees at one point, although, although the board configuration at the village has changed, as this board has, you know, there was some members of the village board that aren't there anymore that would say, we don't even, we're not even interested in it if the town wants it, they're paying for it. Whether or not they take that position now, I don't know.
Maybe we need to get a meeting set, to Carol's point. Set a meeting with the village and the board and put this, just this on the top, one topic and talk about what, what do you guys want to do? Do we want to do it, do it as a committee or do we want to do it with, with a consultant? And by the sounds of it, because of the workload you guys have, a consultant would be the way to go.
They're worried just to look at the numbers.
They're worried just to look at the numbers.
Yeah, let's look at the numbers. Nick, what do you got?
I was browsing the Vermont Community Foundation's website the other day and they actually have a grant that specifically calls out they will pay for some part of consultant to look into.
Consultants that can do it. And that's, that's another thing we'll discuss at the meeting when we meet with the village trustees. You know, when we can get a meeting, let's start, let's start there. Whenever they can meet and whenever we can meet, let's get one going. All right? Any other public, public comments or concerns? Anybody on Zoom? Public comments and concerns?
Anybody for hands up or any chats?
Are you a motion to sign the board orders?
Sure.
Any second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Do we need executive section tonight?
No.
Hey, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We make a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Good night, guys.